According to our agenda, we're going to begin our city council meeting immediately following the Crime Control Prevention District meeting. Does anybody need a brief respite? So without objection, we'll continue on. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is now 6:59. Item two is the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Bob, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you've joined me in the invocation, Father God, you are our Creator and only you know what each moment, day, month, and your offer. As each day unfurls, you reveal your plans along with your forgiveness, grace, and mercy that only you have to share, or thanks are little in comparison. God, so many of our neighbors along the Texas coast and in the Houston area and through most of Florida are suffering from Hurricane Harvey and Irma. We ask that you provide the strength and support that only you can provide. In their times of trouble and in the gasp of personal struggle, we ask that you encourage each of us and the members of the greater community beyond these walls to reach out to them with our physical support as well as our personal thoughts and prayers. Father, attacks on civil persons continue to abound, and in this time of devastating loss of life and property, we humbly ask that you impart to all of us your guidance, wisdom, and judgment so that we may get beyond the minor differences between us and embrace the treasures of this great land that you have provided. Father, it is only when we turn to you in our prayers that we can discard our personal hatreds as you provide a bridge over the troubled waters overflowing our greater community and nation. Father, please give our local, state, and national leaders the guidance, wisdom, and judgment needed for this time, and please deliver us to your purpose. Finally, we call on you to share with the many public servants here this evening your patience, judgment, and wisdom on each of the items before us this evening, and may our thoughts, words, and deeds be only those that you would have us pursue. Please continue to protect, preserve, and prosper our community, state, and nation. Amen. Item three, are there any citizen comments? Did you sign up?
My comments are literally meant for this part of the meeting, so if I could just give my paper to Zena.
Thank you very much. Item four, council member comments. Mike Colmeyer?
Good evening, welcome.
Bob?
Thank you very much for being here.
Michelle?
Welcome.
Mike?
I'm going to do a little strange and make an announcement. On November the 11th, which is Veterans Day, the day that we honor those who are living as opposed to Memorial Day when we honor those who have given their lives, the extended run players of the University of Incarnate Word are going to present a Reader's Theater production here in the council chambers entitled Memories on Review. It's a group of reminiscences of World War II veterans that are interspersed with the music of the era and presented by the older thespians in our community. It's free to the public. It's focused on our diminishing population of World War II veterans, but all veterans and their families are invited. So it'll be at 2:00 on the 11th of November. It should have information in the upcoming Roadrunner and the subsequent Roadrunner and then in iInfo. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Which brings us to item five, presentation, commendations, and announcements. Chief, if you would come forward for the proclamation, I'd appreciate it. Chief, you guys do just the most awesome job as a fire department. Our citizens know that they can count on you. You talk to anybody in the community and they're going to give two or three answers. And in those two or three answers about what they love best about Chavano Park, one of the things that they mention is the fire department, and you're to be commended on the universal appreciation of our citizens. And one of the things that you have been doing long before I got here and now that I am the mayor, you have been lifting up Fire Prevention Week as an activity that is an ongoing activity at Latham Elementary School, and it changes children's lives to be able to appreciate the fire department that we have and the officers that serve here and in other communities. And in recognition and appreciation of all that you and your department does, I want to present to you this year's 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme of every second chance planned two ways out proclamation. Fire Prevention Week will be October 8th through the 14th, and before that, we will have a poster contest and will be judged up here at City Hall, and the awards will be awarded the night of National Night Out. So Chief, thank you so very much for what you do in your department. Michelle?
Just like I said at the last meeting, it's the 3rd of October. It's in the Roadrunner. The police department coordinates it. There are events at people's homes, and then there will be a big event here at City Hall for all of those who cannot participate in one on their street or their area. So everybody should get out and get to meet their neighbors. Thanks.
Perfect. Okay, item 6.1, public hearing, received testimony and written evidence from the city of Chavano Park residents and property owners on the zoning request from Bitter Blue, Inc. to rezone lots 1701, 1702, 1933, 2270, and Block 21, City Block 478E, 82E, and from B1 to B2, Planned Unit Development, PUD, with the following development standard exception: minimum parking space size described in Section 36, definition of parking space. Bill, would you begin this? It is now 6:56.
Yes, Mayor, I'll give you the background and overview, and then I know Laddie's here. He's got a presentation. He can further explain it either now during the public hearing or in the discussion piece. So just for background information, we're talking about the Pond Hill Retail, which is right next to the tennis courts, the tennis courts itself, and then the future site where Two Brothers BBQ was going to be, and we'll show you a map later on. But we received on August 22nd a request from Bitter Blue to rezone those three lots from either B1 or B2 to all three of them to be a B2 Planned Unit Development, which basically provide exceptions which will be approved to the city ordinances. Specifically, these exceptions that were requested was the minimum parking space size, which is included in Section 31.6, definition of parking spaces. And it requested utilization of up to 30% of the designated parking spots be designated compact parking spaces, which really allows an 8-by-16 parking space versus a 9-by-18. And so how that lays out on the ground, Laddie will show you there. From our standpoint, there's procedures for filing zoning changes. Those procedures are outlined in your packet. The staff has followed those procedures. We've notified all the property owners within 500 feet. We provided notice of public hearing. We've executed a public hearing in the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission has approved this, made a recommendation to approve this request to city council on the 6th of September. Our assessment is that this PUD and the requests for exceptions creates more parking spaces, which is a needed requirement in that area, and there would not be any negative impact on any others. So again, this is the public hearing, and I'll pause.
Okay, Laddie, since it's a public hearing portion, I would like for the citizens to hear what the proposal is. Laddie, I'm going to recognize you as a presenter during the public hearing section. If you would come forward and make your presentation, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
This zoning case is a response, our effort to respond to what we are, to respond to what, we've been having some parking issues on Pond Hill, and we anticipate that situation potentially getting more challenging in terms of having numerous of spaces available at peak times. The, what we've run into is with local coffee, that people tend to go there and stay and stay and stay, and this wasn't initially a problem, but as we, the center is now completely full, and all of the contractors are out, and it's functioning, but it has peak time issues. Probably a larger problem has been with the tennis center because they turn over on like an hourly basis at peak times, particularly with schools started, and this creates a jam of the people coming in and then people leaving, people dropping off kids, and people going and coming at specific times. We do have a parking agreement with the building, the office building across the street, which allows us to use that space on non-office hours after 5:00 and on weekends, and that helps, but it doesn't address the overall situation. So if, I can just run through the presentation, and these are the three tracks that Bill mentioned, the retail center, the tennis center, tennis club, and the area on 1604. Again, this is, this is your, just running through what Bill had already explained, these are your ordinances and the reason for this, we are suggesting that the rezoning. Okay, good. This is Pond Hill. This is the retail center, 6,109 square feet, showing you the spaces that are required. We have 60 existing spaces, which you anticipated being plenty to service a retail center of that size. What we're proposing is the, of the 30% of the 60 would be 18, but we can actually only fit three additional compact spaces in, which would take us to 63 total spaces. The situation we're in, any space is an extra space, and we're just trying to get as much as we can, because there is no parking on Pond Hill, on the street itself. There is no parking is allowed. Again, this shows you where the compact spaces are. It's, you pick up one foot per space, so you have to get them in a line and then fit in what you can. We have some curbs we have to move out, but we're not removing any trees or landscaping, which is also, oh, thank you. So we, this, in this area here, we can get two, and over here, we can get one, and that's it for this particular area. And this is, this is before the tennis court was added. And this is the tennis center. Same situation. When we, when we built the tennis club, we had 29 spaces, which we anticipated being sufficient. We had five at the time. We've added three and then one additional, so now we have nine courts total, and there's no way to really park them a whole lot better without getting into removing some of the vegetation and the trees around the area, which is part of the ambiance. So this is an effort, as well as on 1604, it's an effort to try to get as much utilization of the space by using the compact spaces and not having to cover everything with asphalt. So this one was really hard. We've taken out one tree, which is down in this area here, and we're adding these compact spaces. These are tandems, which was suggested by Sarette and Mike Kelly, who run the club. They can put their employees on those tandems, park them in front, and then move when they need to. They, they've tried this, and they believe this will work. So the tandems allow us to get more spaces and avoid, again, avoid more asphalt. And this, this one actually works real well with the tandems, as you can see on there. We can get 11 spaces, 42 total, and we anticipate that that should work really well with the overflow on the office buildings.
Okay.
Again, this is 1604. This is one of the plans that we were working with, with Two Brothers. Anything we come back with on that site will be similar since the entire restaurant is completely designed, as is the side plant. And again, we'd like to come back in, reconfigure using 30%, using compact spaces, the 8-by-16s and the 9-by-18s. I think, can you make a motion that they be all 18? Wasn't that in the, that was in the recommendation from P&amp;Z?
Minimum 36, 38.
Thank you. Summary of what we're trying to accomplish, 63 on the retail center, 42 added to the tennis center, and the balance would be site-driven on the other two commercial lots on 1604.
Okay. Bill, is there anything that you'd like to add before we ask for citizen questions or comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any citizen questions or comments concerning the proposed change? Okay, if there are no citizen questions or comments, it is now 7:07, and we're going to close the public hearing section of this meeting. Item 6.2, Discussion Action Ordinance O. 2017-020, approving rezoning request from Bitter Blue, Inc. to rezone lots 1701, 1702, 1933, 2270, and Block 21, City Block 4782E, from B1 to B2, Planned Unit Development, PUD, with the following development standard exception: minimum parking size, stall size described as in Section 36.1, definition from parking, for parking space. Bill, back to you.
Mayor, again, this requires an approval of an ordinance, and that ordinance provides the background, and also the ordinance itself provides the specific exceptions to the ordinance, and it includes the request from Bitter Blue. So it's, it's complete and very clear, and this was a good job done by Bitter Blue and the Planning and Zoning Commission, getting to this to where it's very clear in the future what the actual PUD changes will be, and there should be no issue.
Okay. Did you have a recommendation from Planning and Zoning considering whether this is an administrative ordinance or whether this is a, will require a second reading?
It was not considered by Planning and Zoning in that light, from that standpoint.
Okay. Did you have a recommendation to the city council concerning whether this is an administrative ordinance or whether it should have a second reading?
Well, I haven't consulted with the attorney. I would think that because it's a zoning change, it probably is not administrative.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion? Are you through, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion concerning ordinance number O. 2017-020?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve ordinance number O. 2017-020. We have a second from Bob Heinzelman. Do we have any discussion? Mike?
Couple of questions. At P&amp;Z, were there any citizen comments received on this? Okay?
No.
And this is just an admin, because we don't get their minutes and time for us to review it, it would be great if you could add that comment in the staff summary sheet because we're sort of back on back. And then the question on the tandem parking, looks like you're going to take out quite a few trees there, at least from the pictures there. Could you talk about that?
We think we can get around all of them. We, well, we know them all real well, but we think we can get around just about all of them. They're going to be tied in a couple of places, like up there right up past the entry. That one is going to be the tightest. The rest of them, we can get around.
Any other questions or comments? Mike?
Just more of a question. It's on the tandems again. Will there be, I mean, there'll be, I know that they're designed for employees to go into and park there, and then other employees park behind them, but will there be any notice on those spaces to kind of warn people that, you know, you might have some guy come play tennis and then somebody park behind him, and just to kind of let them know that there could be a, they could get blocked there?
Yes, sir. They believe they can police it and police their employees as well as their club members. They're, they're pretty on top of this. This has been an issue for them. Well, it's been an issue for everyone out there because we have a lot of cross-parking and cross-use going on, so the Kellys are on top of it, and they believe they can make it work.
But will there be any signs stating that they're tandems?
They will sign it.
Okay. Yeah, just to give them a warning, yeah.
Okay. Michelle?
No, I'm just always worried that there, if there's some other way we can have more spots, because as you put the restaurants up there and it gets more and more congested, are we going to have the same problem? Because I remember how it is on this side for commercial.
Well, that's one of the reasons we're here.
Yeah.
We're going to try and get as much flexibility as we can with the site and also get as many parking spaces as we can, and based on this experience with the type of commercial we have in Chavano Park, and we've got the same problem with Starbucks and McAllisters and so forth, so we're going to try to overpark everything that's of a retail nature, of a restaurant of retail nature.
I love that they're all busy, but there always are lack of parking spaces at all three of the places you mentioned.
I hear that a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Do we have any more questions or comments from council members? There are no, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Brings us to item 6.3, Public Hearing, Crime Control Prevention District Budget for the city of Chavano Park, Crime Control Prevention District for fiscal year 2017-2018. Bill, I'm going to turn it over to you. It is now 10, it's now 7:12.
So, Mayor, as everyone knows that was just here, Crime Control Prevention District Board met, and they passed a resolution, which was slightly amended, but it, that resolution that was passed approved the Crime Control Prevention District fund portion of the city of Chavano Park's proposed budget that you'll vote on in just shortly. This action requires a public hearing into the Crime Control Prevention District Board by the council, and then subsequent to that will be council's consideration for a, also a resolution from the city council approving that.
Okay. Do we have any citizens that would like to speak or make comments during the public hearing section of this meeting? Okay, if there's no citizen questions or comments, it is now 7:13, and we're going to call to close the public hearing section, and we're going to go to item 6.4, Discussion Action Resolution R. 2017-015, adopting the Crime Control and Prevention Budget for the city of Chavano Park, Crime Control and Prevention District for fiscal year 2017-2018. Bill?
So again, Resolution R. 2017-015, which is the resolution from this council, will adopt that, the budget as proposed by the Crime Control Prevention District Board, which also matches the budget that you'll, and that portion of the budget and that fund that you'll budget, you'll approve later on.
Okay. Were there any questions concerning the resolution that would overlap from the prior action?
No.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R. 2017-015?
So moved.
Alderman Simpson has made a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Michelle is second in the motion. We're now open for discussion. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6.5, Proposed Hearing, Public Hearing Proposed Annual Operating and Capital Budget for Fiscal Year 2017-2018. Bill, we're going to open the public hearing section. It is now 7:14.
Again, just background and summary, and then some key discussion points for what changes have been made. A number of budget workshops, after a number of budget workshops, again, the city manager is required to present a city manager proposed budget, which was accomplished on August 3rd. And in that budget, the tax rate was .287742, which was the same rate as the prior year. City council held a special city council meeting on August 9th, six days later, and again, is required to vote on a proposed tax rate. That tax rate that was voted on and approved at that point in time was, was proposed, approved as proposed is .287742, which again is the same rate. That rate could have been reduced. It could not be exceeded at that point in time. City council conducted a workshop on August 22nd to further refine the budget, and then council further considered the budget on August 28th. Additionally, staff presented the final draft budget as a result of those worksheets on September 11th at a special city council meeting, which was last Monday. A public hearing was required, was conducted as required, and there were a couple of changes. And just to highlight the major changes from the proposed city manager budget that was from the 3rd of August until now, as well as the two changes directed by city council on the 11th of September. I'll start with the two proposed changes from the 11th of September, which I have for the audience posted up here, and you'll see them highlighted in blue. So there weren't any changes in the actual budget numbers per se, but to the objectives and tables. So the first one was that we added into the city council objectives, we added an objective which was similar to what was included in the administrative staff section, which basically added the city council chambers' public access channel, an audiovisual capital project to the city council objectives. Okay? So that's something we had talked about in the workshop. Staff had adopted that as an objective, and now we've adopted that as a council objective as well. The second we'll refer to, we have a historic table which reviews the historical staffing level, and so if you had a change, like we used to have an assistant fire chief, and then that was made into an administrative position, but for the, for the previous 10 years, that position is retained, and then that recently came off, and there was a number of positions that used to be here in Chavano Park that for a period of time haven't not existed, and they were zeros across the board, and we were asked to remove those, which we did, and then that budget reflects that. Summary of the other budget changes from the 3 August budget, of course, the fund balance figures changed. We updated the required tax and budget statement. You know, that's the statement on page one or two that says this budget will raise more revenue than the previous budget. Recall that Planning and Zoning Commission went through a drill to review the vision and the strategic goals. Even though it has not been approved in the town plan, the council agreed to adopt that final draft version of that, and so we did that. Obviously, the city manager's cover letter was updated. The organizational chart was updated. We added a couple other charts which helped communicate the budget, like the combined summary chart, which includes the summary of all the budgets that were existed. So the first budget didn't have that, but this one did. We added a pie chart which showed the percentage of expenditures by department, so police and fire, public works, admin, et cetera. One of the things that we talked about was the assumption of how much tax we're going to collect as a city, and we typically collect near 100 or 100, or in some cases, over 100% based upon the delinquencies of previous years as well. And so again, some cities are challenged there that they collect 92%, and that's used in your assumptions primarily for your debt. And so we talked about that, and council directed that we use the 100%, and that resulted in $36,000 extra dollars in tax levy, and then that, in effect, also reduced the transfer that was required in fund balance to capital replacement. So it had some changes, but essentially, we were going to receive that anyway. The budget now more accurately reflects what we think we're going to receive, and we're estimating receiving more than actually the charts and worksheets would say. So also updated was a number of department goals and objectives, and those were fairly minor based upon the final funding. were fairly minor based upon the, the final funding task that we said we were gonna fund. We updated some of the department recap pages. Council also addressed during the workshop the approving of a new crack seal machine for public works that was gonna be on a two-year glide path to, to funding, but they moved all that up to this one here. Council directed that we add a shaded fuel break as an objective, added the electrical improvement, and that was allocated $10,000 from the municipal tract capital replacement fund for that improvement there. And then we added environmental-friendly parking using the remaining $16,000. So essentially, the 24, $26,030 from the municipal tract capital replacement fund has been allocated to those two uses. There were some updates to the capital replacement schedule, and finally, the debt service and the water fund bond summaries, adding more description. And really, that was based upon some comments from the government financial officers, associations, review of our budget. You know, we, we strive every year to get that budget award. We've got the last two years, but we're still working on improving it, and that was some comments what they said would make our budget more complete. Laura did that here. So those are the major changes associated with, with that. Course of action here is to approve the budget as presented in the final reading, has been approved by the, in the first reading, or provide staff guidance where appropriate. Essentially, you're gonna need to approve a budget. So you approve this budget or you, you approve it with amendments associated with going forward. So our recommendation and motion requested is to approve the ordinance, ordinance 2017-019, approving adopting the budget.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other presenters, Bill?
None.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to entertain citizen questions and comments. Do we have any citizens who would like to speak at this time? If there's no citizens that would like to speak at this time, we're going to call to close the public hearing section of this meeting. It is now 7:22. Item 6.6, Discussion Action Ordinance Number O. 2017-019, Approving and Adopting a Budget for the City of Chavano Park, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018. Making appropriations for each fund and department, establishing a sinking fund for existing city financial obligations, providing for the levying and collection of a sufficient tax to pay the interest on such sinking fund obligations, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing a savings and severability clause, and declaring the effective date. This is the final reading. Bill?
The only other thing I would clarify is that this is a record vote. Probably should have had that in the description there, but you usually do that anyways when you move forward. So, Mayor, I don't have anything more. I've summarized everything that we've done. I can answer any clarifying questions as required.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance number O. 2017-019?
So moved.
We have a motion from Michelle Ross. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mike Colomere. Do we have any discussion? Mike?
Because we're adopting in this budget a shaded fuel break and the parking issue on the municipal tract without any input from the tree committee, and before we conduct the survey for the update of the town plan, I can't support this budget.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, Mike Colomere, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob Hinzman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle Ross, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mike?
Nay.
And, okay, and Mike Simpson, they voted nay. The motion carries. Item 6.7, Discussion Action Resolution R. 2017-016, Adopting the City of Chavano Park 2017 Tax Rate. This is a record vote. Bill?
Again, Mayor, the next couple items are all required. As per Tax Code Title I, Property Tax Code, subtitle D, the governing body of each taxing unit, before the later of September 30th or the 60th day of receiving the certified appraisal roll, shall adopt tax rate. So this is all about adopting the tax rate for the current year and shall notify the assessor for the unit of the tax rate adopted. And there's two components to this, each which must be approved separately. So again, as part of discussion, council received the effective and rollback rate calculations on August 3, 2017, which was prepared by the Bear County Tax Assessor Collector. City of Chavano Park, city council approved a motion to propose a tax rate of .2874, 7742 per $100 evaluation on August 9. And that tax rate proposed did not exceed the lower of the effective or the rollback rate, so subsequent tax hearings were not required. The required notice of the 2017 tax rate proposed property tax rate was published on August 18th as required by law in the official city newspaper. The resolution and the required motions reflect this tax rate. So in your packet attached is a copy of the resolution, providing for the required language within section one, with a breakdown between the M and O and the INS rate. Although the total tax rate proposed is the same rate as the current 2017 rate, section two of the resolution includes the, the required statement, and that is, I want to read it, make sure we're clear, that this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than the last year's tax rate. And as per section 26.05, subparagraph B, the tax rate that, if applied to the total taxable value, will impose an amount of taxes to fund the maintenance and operations expenditure of the taxing unit exceeds the amount of taxes imposed for the purpose of that proceeding year. Again, so, again, the motion to adopt this resolution, setting the tax rate of .287742 with the maintenance of operations rate being .7, correction, .27487, and the interest in sinking rate being .012872. And together, those two rates are consistent with what is proposed in the budget that was just recently adopted and posted as required. And then this action is also done by record vote.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt Resolution R. 2017-016, setting a total tax rate of 0.287742 with the maintenance and operation rate being 0.27487, and the interest in sinking rate being 0.012872?
So moved.
We have a motion from Michelle Ross. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike Simpson has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion concerning this item? Mike?
Well, seeing as I just voted against the budget, I'm gonna explain why I'm voting for the tax rate, and that's because the items that I voted against in the budget were funded by the capital replacement and not out of the tax rate, then I think this is a good tax rate, even though we're, we're cranking out more money for M and O and we're still collecting a little bit too much, but we're working on it, on the interest in sinking.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? There being no further discussion. Mike Colomere?
Aye.
Mike Colomere, aye. Bob Hinzman?
Aye.
Bob Hinzman, aye. Michelle Ross?
Aye.
Michelle Ross, aye. Mike Simpson?
Aye.
Mike Simpson, aye. The motion carries. Item 6.8, Record Vote to Ratify the Property Tax Increase Reflected in Fiscal Year 2017-2018 Budget. This is a record vote again. Bill?
Yes, again, a lot of requirements, a lot of different votes from different angles and perspectives, but per the local government code, Title IV, Finances, subtitle A, Municipal Finances, and further, Chapter 102, Municipal Budgets, Section 102.007, adoption of a budget that would require raising more revenue from taxes, property taxes in the previous year, requires a separate vote from the governing body to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. And that happens primarily because of a lot of the different calculations, but a number of things could happen. Tax, over 65 tax freeze comes into play, new properties come in. So even though you adapt, adopt the same tax rate, you get, you tend to get a little bit higher bump in the taxes, but it's, it's usually not very significant, but it's helpful. Anyway, this approved budget, adopted budget, which you've already approved, contains the following statement that will respond to the above vote in an 18-point or larger font, and it'll be in the first part of the budget. And anyway, this is, this, this deals with the property tax comparisons and the total municipal debt obligations. And see the attached cover page in the 17 budget for all required wording and, and so forth. So again, I don't know, we had a slide on that, we don't have a slide on that. Basically, it says this budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $185,000, 185,759, which is a 6.0826 increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property tax added to the tax roll this year is $128,628. Again, so, again, associated with that statement is the record vote on the budget and the tax rate and the, the record of the, the vote. So again, Mayor, you're to take a record vote to ratify the proposed tax increase in the adopted budget.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. Do I have a motion to take a record vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2017-2018 adopted budget?
So moved.
Michelle has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Bob Hinzman is second in the motion. Do we have any discussion on this item? Okay, if there's no discussion, Mike Colomere?
Aye.
Mike Colomere, aye. Bob Hinzman?
Oh, Mary Ann.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Ann? Mary Ann Heisel?
Nay.
Mary Ann Heisel, nay. Bob Hinzman?
Aye.
Bob Hinzman, aye. Michelle Ross?
Aye.
Michelle Ross, aye. Mike Simpson?
Aye.
Mike Simpson, aye. The motion passes. Item 6.9, Discussion Action, Selection of Alternate Judge and Alternate Prosecutor. Bill?
Mayor, let me just get a clarification from the attorney. And is the mayor also voting on this one?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, very good. 6.9, Bill?
Okay, we went through the process here recently, under unfortunate circumstances, to appoint a city prosecutor. And then during that discussion, as we went through that process, we also highlighted the fact that the prosecutor that we designated had been the alternate, and we needed an alternate prosecutor, and we have not here recently designated an alternate judge. So council directed that we go out and send out a request for qualifications for those two positions, which we did. And your summary sheet talks about that on July 24th, we advertised that RFQ for the alternate municipal judge as well as the alternate court prosecutor. We had to re-advertise this in August again because we only received one application for an alternate judge, and so we re-advertised it again, and as a result of that, we received one application for an alternate prosecutor. We've coordinated this, actually, in your packets is, is a, are the resumes and letters as appropriate. We did discuss this with both the current prosecutor and the current judge, and both of these individuals come very well-respected and have the support of the judge as well as the prosecutor to assume that position as, as the alternate. So again, I think this is the right thing to do. It provides us more flexibility and may set us up for continuity if there's a requirement to change in the future. So again, the, the two candidates are Stephanie Stevens as the alternate judge, and she would be appointed with a two-year term, as well as Carlos Solis as an alternate court prosecutor, and that would be an indefinite term until action's taken. Compensation would be when they, only when they serve as the replacement for either one of those, and that would be in the same terms as the current prosecutor and judge. So I don't know if you have any questions on that?
Okay. Well, we'll open up for motion and then we'll see if we have any questions. Do we have a motion to appoint Stephanie Stevens as alternate judge with a two-year term and appoint Carlos Solis, is it Solis or Solis?
Solis.
Solis? Solis as alternate court prosecutor for an indefinite term with compensation equivalent to the fiscal year 2017-2018 compensation for the sitting municipal judge and municipal court prosecutor to be rewarded when and only when called upon to act. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Michelle Ross has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike Simpson has seconded the motion. We're now open for discussion. Do we have any discussion? Mike?
I don't know, Mr. Solis, but Stephanie Stevens was one of the faculty advisors to the criminal justice group in, at St. Mary's. She's been practicing criminal, criminal defense for a long time. Great teacher, great, great person. I think she'll handle herself well if she has to sit in place of Judge Takas.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, there being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 610, Discussion Action, yeah, Discussion Action, Alternate Regular Meeting Date for the December 25th City Council Meeting. Bill?
The council meeting is regularly scheduled the fourth Monday of the month in December. That falls on December 25th. And so just to make this short and sweet, city, city staff is recommending that we reschedule that for December 18th, or you can choose a different date.
Okay. Why don't we just open this one up for discussion so we can look at our calendars before we make a motion? Does anybody have any comments, concerns, questions, or would y'all like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Michelle is gonna make a motion?
That we change the regularly scheduled meeting from December 25th to December 18th.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Bob Hinzman has seconded the motion. Doesn't look like we're gonna have any comment or objection from council, Mike?
Oh, yes. I would like to make a substitute motion that we cancel the December meeting as we have in the last two years. There's usually very little to do. Everyone's going crazy getting ready for the holidays, and so the substitute motion would be to cancel the meeting for December.
Okay, we have a motion to substitute. Do we have a second on the motion to substitute? Do I have a, we can always pick this up in November as well.
Can I second another motion?
You can second another motion.
Second another motion.
Okay, we have a motion to substitute which would cancel the December meeting. Now, if we cancel the December meeting, we're not gonna get to come back. It would take a little bit more effort. I guess November, we could reinstate the December meeting if we had to.
Why don't we keep it the way it is for December 18th and then cancel it if we feel like it?
Okay, that's part of our discussion. Is there any further discussion on that point?
So I remember us not having it last year, but not two years in a row. Am I mistaken on that, Mike?
I remember that.
I misspoke.
Okay, you're correct.
One.
So last year, we had it scheduled, but there was not, there was a lack of agenda items, and we, and in collaboration, we just canceled it, and there was, there was nothing. We had it as a backup in case we needed it. We thought we were gonna try to cancel it, you know?
So my question?
So either way you go is, I'm fine. If you cancel it, then you'd have to come back as a special meeting.
So my question to you, Bill, is, is that something you think would put an extra burden on the staff to cancel that meeting, or, or would that be beneficial to the staff?
No, the only, I don't anticipate there's a lot that's gonna come out in the December meeting. The only advantage to keeping is in case something came up, you'd... The only advantage to keeping is in case something came up, you, you'd, you'd already have it scheduled and coordinated, and you could just post an agenda.
But as been stated, if we had to put a meeting on for special purposes, we could do that anyway.
You, you could do that as well, and the only constraint is you need four council instead of five.
However, yeah, we will have to have four people, whereas if we reschedule this to the eighteenth, then we can meet with three people because it's a regularly scheduled meeting. Mike?
I agree with Michelle, let's just leave it on, you know, we can cancel it in November, I mean, you know, better safe than sorry, that's just, I mean, I mean, it probably will get canceled, but it, just in case something comes up, I'd say just leave it there and cancel it in November if we have to.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? So we have a motion to substitute which would cancel the December twenty-fifth meeting, all in favor say aye of canceling without putting in an alternate date?
Aye.
Say aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion substitute fails, we're now going to consider the primary motion, which is to reschedule the city council, the regular city council meeting from December the twenty-fifth to December the eighteenth, do we have any discussion on this? There being no discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Board nominations, item six eleven, discussion action, select boards, commissions, and committees. Bill?
So, we've, uh, been through a process of applications, that application period ended on September first, city secretary has assembled the, uh, results associated with that, um, she's created, um, a matrix for you, basically, which outlines each committee, each council member, and then there's a, a tabulation at the bottom. So, I, I will say that, um, based upon the number of vacancies, council directed, um, nominated, um, based upon the applications, those to fill that. Um, it was not intended to be a, um, rank order, in fact, most of you did not list at one, two, three, four, they just, you just provided a number, and so what you see there in this chart, and now, do we have the chart associated with it? We don't? We'll probably pull it up. Anyway, um, we'll, we'll do that so you can kinda see through that, but the, the listing is there, and, um, you should be able to see. You gonna go to the first one? Okay, so the first one was board of adjustments, um, there's three positions opening plus two alternates, um, each council member designated an individual associated with that, and then below that is, is the tabs. And that's, was the methodology for how that went on, and I don't think you want me to read each one of them.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion to appoint or select, selection of boards, commissions, and committee members?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Michelle?
Um, based on the results tabulated from those of us on the dais, um, the board of adjustments, I'd like to recommend Fred Hobbs, Bill Hartman, and Larry Lyons as, uh, board of adjustment members, Michael Muir and Charlie Braim as alternates. To the investment committee, I'd like to recommend Mark Standiford. To the tree committee, I'd like to recommend Randy Smith, Howard Marnon, Kim Lane, and Randy Whalen. For the water committee, I'd like to recommend Al Whaley, Thomas, uh, Tomas Palmer, Matthew Trippi, and Steve Fleming will take, I'd recommend the one-year term. And then for planning and zoning, Bill Simmons, Carlos Ortiz, Mike Jansen, Carrie Dyke, and Jason Lenahan.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Mike Colmeyer. Uh, we're now open for discussion on the motion. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we take them out, say, say, item one at a time, one board rather than a, a composite motion.
Okay, uh, Mike Simpson has made a motion to, uh, consider each one of the boards and commissions and committees, uh, separately instead of as a common, as a common motion. Do we have a second on the motion to consider separately?
I second.
Mary Ann Heisel has seconded the motion, do we have any discussion on that point? Okay, all in favor of considering the items separately, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion, the items will be consepar, considered separately. Michelle, which one do you want to consider first? It was your motion.
Uh, I guess we'll do board of adjustments.
Okay, we have a motion to consider the board of adjustments. Michelle, would you give those names again?
Fred Hobbs, Bill Hartman, Larry Lyons as board members, Michael Muir, and Charlie Braim as alternates.
May I make a statement, please?
Yep.
Mr. New York, Carlos Hall, and Asher, who's named from all boards and committees to the state.
Oh.
And Asher and, um, Mr. Brayden, the current alternate, he was actually investing in law and is a regular, but he is a current alternate.
Correct, well, he, yes, okay. Well, since I didn't know that...
So do you need two more alternates?
So we don't have a...
We don't have another person.
Another alternate unless...
Mr. New York, Carlos Ortiz, who is currently serving on the county.
Okay, uh, do I, do I have a motion to postpone consideration of the board of adjustments until the next regularly city council meeting?
Why don't we just consider who's there?
Yeah, why don't we approve who's there?
And then we can find another alternate if we want to.
Okay.
Or, we don't really need an alternate, but unless it's required, which it may be for BOA, does BOA legally require us to have an alternate?
It's required, it's allowed.
Okay.
But it's helpful.
Okay.
Because you need three force of the members to get anything accomplished, so if someone's missing, it's helpful to have an alternate.
Okay.
Okay, so, so would you restate your motion on the board of adjustments?
Okay, uh, I move that we appoint Fred Hobbs, Bill Hartman, and Larry Lyons to the board of adjustments as members, and then Charlie Braim to the board of adjustments as an alternate.
Okay, uh, Mike, are you, would you consider that a friendly amendment to the prior motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we're considering the board of adjustments, Hobbs, Hartman, Lyons, and Brayne, with Brayne being the alternate, do we have any discussion concerning those items, those individuals? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Michelle, next one?
Investment committee, Mark Standiford as a member.
Okay. Do we have any discussion concerning the appointment of the investment committee of Mark Standiford? Okay, there being no discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Michelle, tree committee?
Tree committee, Randy Smith, Howard Marnon, Kim Lane, and Randy Whalen, which I might add is everybody who applied that isn't going to possibly serve on another committee, because you can only serve on one committee.
Okay, uh, we have a motion for Randy Smith, um...
Howard Marnon.
Uh, Kim Lane, and Randy Whalen. Uh, do we, and that was our original motion, do we have any discussion concerning the nominees?
The only discussion I have is, uh, by this motion, we're not precluding anybody from serving because it's my understanding that everybody can serve, and that's what I requested when I sent in my information, that all who wish to serve can serve on this.
Yes. And I, the reason that I didn't include everybody else is because in my vote, there, they put one or two, uh, as their first and second choices for other committees, and I placed them on other committees, but if they didn't make it on the other committees, you're right, I don't have any problem with them going on the tree committee.
Right, I just don't wanna preclude...
Then are you requesting that we postpone consideration of the tree committee until the other committees have been voted on?
Okay, I recommend that, I'll move on to water.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to postpone consideration of the tree committee until the end of nominations, until the, the election of all other boards and commissions. Uh, do I have a second on the motion postpone consideration until that later point?
I would just ask that if we, you know, not...
We have a, we have a motion, and I'm entertaining a second, if I don't get a second, then we can open up the second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, which means now we're going to vote on postponement until at the end of a consideration of the other boards and commissions.
But I have a question that I think impacts that vote.
All in favor of postponing, it is a motion to postpone which takes precedent over all discussions, and so we're gonna vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, the, all opposed...
All in favor say no, nay.
Okay, the motion to postpone consideration until the end of the, uh, until the end of the process is approved, we'll consider the tree committee last. Michelle, next item?
Water. Al Whaley, Tomas Palmer...
I, I'm sorry, so I can't even have a discussion about...
Okay, uh, as appointed procedure, I'll recognize you as appointed procedure, most in postponed takes precedent over all items that are being considered, it's an item that is not subject to debate. We vote on it, if we have a second, we vote on it, and if, if it fails, then we're open for discussion. If it doesn't fail, then...
I understand that.
The motion to postpone carries through.
I guess I'm just trying to question why we would need to vote on this if anybody who wants to serve can serve, that, that we could have made that motion, but...
Because we're, that wasn't what the original motion was, Michelle talked about it, but we talked about taking it to the very end so that we would, so that we would be able to consider everybody else. Okay, Michelle?
Al Whaley, Tomas Palmer, Matthew Trippi, and then Steve Fleming as the person filling the remaining, uh, term for one year.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, to appoint Al Whaley, uh, Matt Trippi...
Tomas Palmer.
Tomas Palmer, and then Fleming, Steve Fleming, to, uh, succeed to a one-year term that is currently open. Uh, we had a second.
Second.
Open for discussion. If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries, uh, brings us to the planning and zoning commission. Michelle?
Mike Jansen, Carrie Dyke, Carlos Ortiz, Bill Simmons, and Jason Lenahan.
Mike Jansen, Carlos Ortiz, Carrie Dyke, Mike Jans, um, uh, Jason Lenahan, and who else?
Bill Simmons.
And Bill Simmons. Okay, uh, do we have any discussion? Mike?
I'd like to make a, uh, motion for an amendment to delete Carlos Ortiz and replace him with Walter Sanderson.
Okay, we have a motion, um, to substitute, which one was it?
Carlos Ortiz.
Carlos Ortiz.
Remove Carlos Ortiz and replace him with Walter Sanderson.
Okay, we have a motion to remove Carlos Ortiz and to replace him with Walt Sanderson. Do we have a second?
I second.
Um, we have a second, we're now open for discussion on the motion to substitute.
I think Mr. Sanderson's experience as, uh, a real estate appraiser would be of great use, uh, to the planning and zoning commission. Mr. Ortiz's second choice is the tree commission, committee, and he could serve admirably there.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Michelle?
Uh, Mr. Ortiz is serving on the planning and zoning commission now, as are Mike Jansen, Ken Carrie Dyke, and I would like him to continue, that we need continuity on planning and zoning, we're, uh, going to be losing and have lost some key members, um, so I would like to see him stay, and, uh, I also do not, when I look at, make my decision, I also look at the whole area of Chavino Park and try to make sure we have coverage in gated neighborhoods in all the different areas of the city, and, um, I would like to see someone else in Chavino Creek remain on the, um, on the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay, uh, we're going to vote...
I would, I would just say, I had made my list, and I had included Mr. Ortiz on my list, um, replacing, introducing, I guess, Mr. Sanderson in place of Ms. Dyke, um, and I recognize the need for continuity, I would just state with respect to Mr. Sanderson, um, I think he's been at every meeting that I've been at since, for a year, um, I've seen him at plenty of planning and zoning committee meetings, um, I tried to look hard at the documents and, and the materials, uh, I know, uh, Mr. Ortiz from church, and I know, um, he's a master gardener, and his skills, he did put as, uh, Mr., uh, I'm sorry, Alderman Simpson pointed out, the tree committee is number two, and that's where I put him as well. I, I say when folks really take an effort to get involved, as Mr. Sanderson has done, out of all the folks, um, on the list, you kinda want to make a place for them, and, and that's why I'd like to see him on there.
Okay, Michelle?
Based on the process that we went through, uh, and the reason that the names are outlined the way I outline them, it's based on the majority of what the council member, who the council member selected, so that's another reason why Carlos Ortiz is on the list, because he got the majority of council votes in our preliminary.
Okay, uh, any further discussion from the council members? Uh, just a comment about, um, Carlos, Carlos is a former vice superintendent for the Northside Independent School District, he has extensive experience in meetings and in, as well as in community planning, he's the kinda guy that you look at and you say, golly, he's got credentials, um, and I would hope that you would continue to consider him. Okay, uh, there being no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to substitute Walt Sanderson for Carlos Ortiz, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion to substitute fails, we're now back to the primary motion, which is to appoint Mike Jansen, Carlos Ortiz, Carrie Dyke, Jason Lenahan, and Bill Simmons to, um, planning and zoning. Do we have any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries. It brings us back to the tree committee. Michelle?
Um, I propose make a motion for Randy Smith, Howard Marnon, Kim Lane, and Randy Whalen.
Okay, we have a, uh, and we have a second that's been made initially, and we're now breaking this out, okay, we have a motion for Randy Smith, Harry Morin, Morin, Kim Lane, and, um, Randy Whalen. Do we have any discussion concerning these? Okay, there being, yes?
I guess I would just make a, a substitute motion, I'm sorry if I get the motions wrong, that instead of naming a slate, that if anybody who wants to serve can serve, that we state that, that the motion would be, anybody who wants to serve on the tree, tree committee be allowed to serve.
Okay, we have a motion to substitute which would allow open appointment to the, uh, to the tree committee, do I have, which would actually be in, uh, conflict with our ordinance?
Is it? If it is, then I don't wanna do that.
We have nominations that we take for appointments.
I recognize that, but we also have some, something that's happened at various meetings where we allow anybody who wants to serve to serve.
And I don't have a problem with doing it that way, as long as you add the caveat that the person, uh, persons cannot be serving on an existing committee, other committee, because you're only allowed to serve on one.
I can certainly agree with that.
Okay, well, uh, we have a motion, let's go ahead and, um, see if we have a second on the motion.
Bill's trying to tell us something, I think.
If there's a second, I'll talk then.
Yeah, we have a second.
I'll second, and we already have it, yeah.
Don't we have a second?
Do we have it?
No, we don't have a second, Bob has seconded the motion, okay. Uh, do you have some points that you'd like to share with us, Bill?
Well, I'm busily trying to look up the ordinance. I'm pretty sure that the ordinance requires the council to approve, and it's been your practice to appoint anybody that's applied to that, you know, I can confirm here in just a sec, we'll, we'll give it to the city attorney.
You know what, I withdraw my motion.
And, and the only other thing I would say for, for your consideration is the tree committee chairman is put on the agenda, um, agenda item which we will consider tomorrow, which is what's the right number of committee members, and so...
I withdraw my motion, it's not supposed to be complicated, I, I was trying to make things less complicated, that's all.
Okay.
But can I...
Bob?
But to your point, I think everybody that did apply that's not involved in another committee is gonna be on the tree committee.
Yes, that's how I did it.
So, I think we've, we've included everybody that did apply.
We did.
That's the goal.
I did.
Okay, uh, the motion has been withdrawn, I'm assuming that the second is withdrawn as well, second is also withdrawn, which brings us to the primary motion, do we have Do we have, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Brings us to item seven. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Do we have any items in item seven that anyone would like to pull for discussion? Okay, there are no requests for discussion, which brings us to item eight. Consent agenda, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do I have a motion to approve and/or accept items 8.1 through 8.7?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion to approve 8.1 through 8.7? Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Brings us to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Michelle has made a motion to adjourn. Mike Colmeyer is second in the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We're adjourned.